Okay. All right, so we're ready. And our next speaker is Larvy Aitabao. I know I'm mispronouncing that, so please correct me from IDG. Okay.
Will you allow me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh my God.
Um, can we begin?
Larvy, go ahead.
Yes, need to end it from your side. But anyway, Commissioner, thank you for this type of hearing. And last time I was waiting eagerly to get to the meeting and I was really upset. But thank you for doing a follow up with us and allowing others. Allowing us to actually submit the testimony of the drivers. But look, all the drivers that were, they're still here. They were very concerned about these new rules. And we have to explain it to them in a way that align with the vision of the TLC. And of course, the vision of the, you know, entire departments. Now, we have a handful of problems as drivers. And the top of that, there is more coming. It's like, I'm sorry to put it this way, but there's a lot of garbage that has been dumped on drivers. Right? You got the NYPD ticketing drivers left and right. You got the, I was surprised some, you know, to see actually the fire department, the ticketing drivers as well. Right? That's the thing. And then, of course, the TLC and other agencies as well. We understand the parking sucks big time in New York. You know, I, I suffered a lot. I paid so many parking tickets in New York City that I had to move out of New York City because it was too much. Now, is that a problem of a driver who's trying to earn his living? It's like, I'm going to work, but every time I'm trying to get to the office, there is someone that actually wants to take money from me. I think that's really unfair. Now, the city recognized us as essential workers. Nice and sweet. That's awesome. We want to be recognized because we make the goddamn city move 24 hours. And you guys know that. You, Commissioner, when you came in, we believed in you, we believe in the mission. You gotta change the dynamics, make the lives of all drivers easier. But then when I hear rules like this, I'm like, wait a minute, what's going on? So I have to go and read and research and find out what's really going on. Yes, there is bad apples out there. I understand that. Everybody understands that. But look, those bad apples previously, they got a ticket, so they got a slap on the wrist. They're not gonna do it again. Nobody wants to lose $100, $200, $300 a day. That is the bare, the bare, what do you call it, minimum that they can make. Right? So if they make $200 and they pay it, they go home with zero, so they can't feed their family. I know that is, I think, you owe me like 30, 30 more seconds. But I just want to say this, cities like Paris, I was in Paris. When I got into the car, the driver went in the bus. I'm like, you can go on the bus lane? You say yes, as long as you have a passenger, you're allowed. So that is a very progressive approach. And I think the TLC should adopt some, the city should adopt something like that. Are you guys stopping me? I'm still speaking? Oh.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Michelle Doten from IDG. Ms. Doten, you can unmute your microphone. Ms. Doten, you need to unmute.
That's me. Now you mute.
You're on.
Can you hit me? Let me move a little closer. Good afternoon. I'm gonna walk towards you because I'm in the back. Hello, Commissioner and Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. I just want to say that what we've been fighting for for years is the safety, right? Our drivers fight for safety. When I listen to the advocates for riders with disability, I 100% agree with the fact that over the years, no one has actually sat with the drivers, with DOT and the organization that represents drivers in order to make it correct. The system is that you have never took into consideration curbside drop off anymore. Curbside drop off is nonexistent. Nonexistent because you have put a bike lane, a bus lane. You have riders that we are allowed to pick up and drop off, but cannot do that job because that job is impossible. Because now we have half a block with a bike, bike stands that takes up, I mean, issues and spacing that could be a space that could have been allocated for a driver to pick up. Why hasn't a space been created in each block for a legal pickup for the driver? Or the, the two to three minutes that you give a driver to drop off and pick up does not account for someone with a total disability. Does not account for a grandmother trying to get out with a walker. Does not take into consideration a mother with children. How about we look to work together with DOT and start finding a true solution for this pickup and drop off area? We pay MTA. They get a tax from the drivers. Then why can't they go into the lane to drop off? When you're considering and when DOT is considering a lane,
I need to talk.
Do something that makes sense. Let's do something that makes sense for the drivers. And as far as the Vision Zero and accessibility, that's great. But how about just expanding
30 seconds remaining.
Of course, to add more Vision Zero into it. If you feel that is something that is needed, it should be implemented in a course they already take. And the other thing too is the stuff for, when you say accessibility, I agree with, with them also. They need to be able to see, secure the passengers. And worrying about a time limit of two minutes is not a way to be able to do it securely. We're asking you to really sit down with us and put this together properly so we can represent the, the riders and the drivers. Give equal consideration for everyone.
Thank you.
You know, a ticket is a ticket.
So would you agree that most of your members are stellar drivers, safe drivers? Right? You would agree with that?
Okay, go ahead. Let's see if I can hear you.
You would agree that a vast majority of your drivers are
Okay. Okay.
Where's your body?
Right there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our Commissioner, sorry. Nope, I'm not hearing you. Okay, it's muted. Commissioner, go ahead.
You hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Michelle, you would agree that a vast majority of IDG members of your drivers are safe drivers?
Correct.
So in my statistics, right, there are 3% of drivers who are recidivists. They keep on making the same illegal behaviors. So, so you're knowing what you told me today. How should I better address those drivers, right? I want to target those drivers who have six plus points and are not changing in an 18 month period. How do we address those drivers?
No, I don't think that a fine would be correct. I believe that, I believe that if you pull those drivers, yes, I understand maybe just the Vision Zero portion of it. Have them come in and be a warning to them. You can give a warning and say, hey, you need this class. Let's see how we can make it better. We are working to get proper spacing for you to drop off and pick up, to change the habits. But Commissioner, you know that in this city, in almost every borough, parking is very, very limited, right? And then when we added half a block for bicycles to be parked, we also take away vital spacing for these. I understand when Jean was saying today, she's absolutely correct. The ability for her to be picked up properly is, is really hard. Because when they go down to the, the end of the block, you add time, you come around, you add time, and that driver and that block may only have one lane. So if we can find a way to allocate a space just for drivers, taxi, rideshare, everyone that's doing a job that they can just pull in. Because a fire hydrant is not a solution. It's not, right? Because if something happens, they cannot. But when DOT is making these rules and putting in these lanes, they are not taking the safety of passengers getting out of a car. Our drivers right now are, when they get, when a passenger opens the car, let's be honest, a rider's mind is already out the car, two blocks away from their drop off, right? They don't take the time to look and see there's something coming. Even if the driver gets a quick chance to tell them, they're already out of the car. So the driver is the one who's punished for that action with their insurance. Right? They may lose it. We have drivers that's lost it and it's the riders. We've got to come up with a solution that makes sense for everyone. And I believe, Commissioner, you are very fair, very fair and have, have been working to help the drivers. But if we sit down together with the advocates, with the agencies that represent the drivers, with your agency, we could come up with a real solution that doesn't just punish the drivers, but show that you're actually trying to find a solution for them by, not the ticketing, but the persistent violators, we can take the money out.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I appreciate it. And yes, we're gonna try to find a solution. I have talked to our advocates, all of our driver advocates, so that we get on the road to a rule package that, you know, we are more content with, but not, and I can't, I will never say that everyone will be happy with. So, well, we'll start there. But we have work to do and we'll continue to work with you. And of course, our other advocates to make sure that the rule proposal is fair. All right, thank you. Next.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pedro Acosta from IDG.
All right. Hi. Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. I mean, good morning, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everyone, for joining this, this meeting and for giving me the opportunity also to talk. Listen, I'm a driver for over 24 years. And I'm also a driver for a wheelchair vehicle. And, you know, I disagree with you when you say that you advocate for people with disabilities. When you, when you don't allow that we do the pickup, drop off properly, you are not helping people with disabilities. Before, somebody was talking about the time that we take to do a proper pickup and drop off. Remember that we have to wait for the person to come outside. And then we have to ask permission for everything we're going to do to the passenger before we start doing it. Especially when we have to put the seatbelt on the passenger. We have to be very careful because for any touch improperly to the person might conduct to a accusation of sexual harassment or sexual misconduct or sexual abuse. So if there is any complaint against us, to the company, those, the company right away, they get deactivated. And there is no way that somebody can get reactivated again after they're accused of sexual harassment. Okay? There are some exceptions for guys who have been deactivated, but not for people who is accused of sexual harassment. So it takes time for a person who is picking up a person with disability to do properly this job. Okay? So one more thing, I think we should, we are, we are not disagree with the regulation, but we don't, we should be exempted of this charge. Okay? Because we have to go to pick up anybody, either disabled or non-disabled person. We have to do it properly and we have to go through, through a bus lane or maybe the bike lane. Okay, so I understand that if we take there for a long time, we get a ticket. But we just, we're doing our job, picking up and dropping off. So driver, TLC driver should be exempt of this violation. Okay? Um, let me see. All right. So, um, yes, we should be exempted of this, of this ticket, please. Okay? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, there is other drivers here that they sign up. They want to know if they're gonna be speaking.
They have to sign up and the procedure we outlined. So that was covered before. Our next speaker is Hector German. Mr. German, yes, they are. Nope. Yes, there you go.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioner David Doth. And good morning, everybody. I speak in Spanish because I have, thank you for giving me three minutes. I thought I talking about three points. El primero lo hablar en español porque es mi lengua donde puedo decir las cosas mucho más claras. El primer punto es sobre la crisis que generó el COVID-19, la crisis de salud, donde la industria de taxi perdió alrededor de 33,000 placas. Esta placa, la comisión de taxi limosin, tiene que devolverla lo más pronto posible porque eso ha traído como consecuencia que nuestra comunidad está en peligro. Nuestros compañeros necesitan esa placa para ir a darle un servicio seguro a nuestro compañero, a nuestra ciudadanía, perdón. 33,000 placas y que ya lo hemos conversado con el comisionado David Doth en otras ocasiones. El segundo punto es sobre Visión Cero. Visión Cero, que fue introducida en la administración del ex alcalde, Willy de Blasio, en el año 2014. Y que cuando revisamos los números a esta hora, no llega ni siquiera a un 18% del objetivo que fue creado en Visión Cero. O que fue traído desde Suecia. Un programa que fue creado en 1997 en Suecia, pero se trajo aquí en el año 2014. Apenas podemos revisar que no llega ni siquiera a un 18% del objetivo, que era reducir a cero la muerte y los heridos de alta gravedad. Lo dijimos en el 2014 y lo seguimos diciendo ahora. Solamente ese programa se implementó para buscar dinero de los choferes, pero al peatón se dejó afuera ese programa. Hay que educar, hay que trabajar con la ciudadanía para que ese programa, que es muy bueno porque cada vez que se puede salvar una vida dentro de un accidente, eso está bien. El tercer punto es sobre lo que ya han tratado nuestros compañeros. Necesitamos tiempo para nosotros darles ese servicio con, con amor, con respeto y eficiencia a la ciudadanía. Cinco minutos que dice la, la MTA que nos da a nosotros no son suficientes. La comisión de taxi limosin dice que recogemos, levantamos un millón de pasajeros diariamente. Esos ciudadanos necesitan tiempo. Hay, tenemos una población, tenemos una población de unos 37%. Población que necesita servicio todos los días para ir a su clínica, a sus apoyes. Pero es una población envejeciente que nosotros necesitamos mucho más tiempo. Hoy nuestra ciudad está en peligro porque nuestros choferes no pueden llegar a las líneas, a la bus lane, a recoger ese pasajero ni a dejarlo. Por temor a los tickets que están llegando todos los días a nuestros compañeros. Así que esperamos que la comisión de taxi limosin escuche la voz de los choferes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Did we have an interpreter? I think
Because he didn't request it in time.
Right, took us by surprise, yes.
Translate it and then send it to the commissioners.
Okay, after we get the transcript. Okay.
We'll do, request interpreter and so that we can have it at our hearing.
All right. Our next speaker is Ramon Rivera. Mr. Rivera, can you unmute your mic and begin? Okay, we'll go on to the next speaker and come back to you. Wilfredo Disla. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Wilfredo Disla. Yes, okay.
Hi, hi, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, David Doth, for getting us, letting us at this opportunity. On the beginning, you present examples of the, what, what is the, what is gonna be, the, what I have to do for get a ticket or forget the, the fee for the TLC? And then I'm gonna show you some explain, some examples. I'm on the street, I'm a real driver from Utani, I'm for IDG. I'm on the street. The coalition know every driver needs to be represented for TLC. But I got a question for the TLC commissioner council. When the TLC, when the drivers disappear, what are you gonna do? What is gonna be your job? Because TLC works for the drivers, but it's not for finished drivers. You have to represent the drivers. And then let me sound, let me show you some examples. This is a street, 145th Street here in Bronx, in the real life. You see, the two lines got bus, bus lines. I can't stop over there because I got a wheelchair vehicle. Wheelchair vehicle, I was stopping in the, in the pump. This is a wheelchair vehicle for service for people with disabilities. But in this line, I got a CDMD. CDMD is like a hospital, like, like a, people with sickness COVID over there. Most of them, people with disabilities use a wheelchair. Well, in the city, you got this business. You see the city bike? City bike is a business for the city. Whole, almost the whole block is, is used for the city. MD for the city bike. And then I would have to stop. My vehicle is here, a vehicle for a service, a vehicle for the people with disabilities. I get the service for the people, but what I have to do here? And the cross line and the CDMD front and the, and the city bike over there. We need to be represented for the TLC. DOT got here, the bus and these two lines. If I just stop over there to figure out my customer over there, my customer or my patient in my case, I have to be ticketing. I got a ticket for a stop over here for the city, for the MTA camera on the bus.
30 seconds remaining.
We just like the service. We just move that city every day for every, every city resident. People with disabilities, people need a taxi in the morning, people to go to the school, people to go to the hospital, people to go to the work. We, we made this job. It's not easy. When it's 20 degrees freezing, we are on the street. When it's summer, we are on the street, every day, every night. Taxi drivers make great jobs. Thank you so much. And please, Commissioner, you got the thing to change this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker, Raza Gondal.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raza Gondal and I am working as a TLC driver for the last 11 years in New York City. My concern is not the double parking and other thing, the, my issue is passenger pickup or drop off. For the safety of passenger, we need to pick up or drop off the passenger at the curbside so that they can safely go to the, their destination or sidewalk. But in city, there are so many streets, like 34th Street in Manhattan, or like 21st Street in Astoria, Long Island City, where bus lanes are on both sides. So we have no option. Either we, for passenger safety, we need to go into the bus lane to access the curb. Otherwise, we would, we have to block the main active traffic lane and that is like a very, very dangerous for the passenger safety and also other traffics. So this should be considered. And also, what, I have the experience, I have, and also there are so many streets in the Brooklyn and New York City where our bike lanes are on both sides. Like Bedford Avenue in Brooklyn or Vanderbilt Avenue, there are bike lanes are on both sides. So we don't have any space to pick up or drop off. And there are many passengers, they are like elderly persons or disabled person with the wheelchair or with the walker or roller coaster. Or also some with the kids or with the luggage. They, they can't walk like a one block or two block. They need the service at the, safe service at the curbside. So if we, we have to go for a quick, even if we do the quick pickup, it may take only like a one minute. But if there is some elderly person or wheelchair, then it may take sometime five to 10 minutes even. So we have no choice. Once I was picking up passenger from Vanderbilt Avenue, I got a ticket that, of the bike lane. And if somebody drives in a bus lane or drives in a bike lane, that's a different thing, that is illegal.
30 seconds remaining.
Consider this, our pickup or discharge because we don't have any other choice. So this is the main thing. Or we should give some spots like a bus stops in every block that we can, then we can do over there, except there is a wheelchair person. Thank you very much. Appreciate it for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Yankee from the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. Sorry? Okay, I'm sorry, Evan, go ahead.
My name is Evan Yankee and I'm the advocacy director for the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. We speak today to ask you to pull the proposed rule on increasing penalties for driver violations so it can be discussed more with the disability community. As it stands, the proposed rule to increase penalties for violations will make it more difficult for people with disabilities to get the door-to-door service they are entitled to in New York City's complicated streetscape. BCID already receives constant complaints from riders with disabilities whose drivers are unable to drop them off and pick them up in safe locations on the street because of a fear of violations. On many streets in New York City, there is no space on the curb to drop off people with disabilities who are unable to get to their destination in other ways. A person with a disability may not be able to travel a lengthy distance to or from whatever legal space is available. We know people with disabilities are constantly pressured by drivers to be dropped off at locations that avoid violations, but make it impossible for someone to reach their destination safely. Until these streetscape problems are solved, increasing penalties on drivers puts them in the impossible position of risking their livelihood or giving a rider with a disability a safe drop off. Vehicles transporting riders with disabilities are different than other categories of vehicles that receive violations. Vehicles transporting riders with disabilities have an obligation to provide door-to-door service that allows a person to travel in their community, just like everyone else. We urge you to rethink this proposal in a manner that gives drivers an opportunity to fulfill their obligations to people with disabilities without punishment. I'll also add, just based on some of what we've heard today, that the TLC has referred to the intent to target recidivist drivers who are imagined to be a group of intentionally unsafe bad actors. And the TLC has asked many speakers today how to deal with these drivers. Speakers have offered many options, designated spots, changing the streetscape, providing driver relief resources, but they all boil down to the same thing. Give drivers better options to keep people safe and serve riders with disabilities. Even if you imagine that there's a pool of intentionally bad actors out there, whatever safety impacts they have pale in comparison to the safety concerns of navigating the current streetscape with no designated pickup-drop-off spots, no relief areas, and a different streetscape on every block. Improve safety, that's our answer. Everyone agrees, but few people here believe the biggest threat to safety is a small group of recidivist drivers who have safe options they are intentionally choosing not to take and are gonna be effectively punished into figuring out answers to the problems that people with disabilities and drivers both are asking you for help with today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Soji Adu.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm a biker and a disability rights advocate at the Bronx Independent Living Services. Dear TLC officials, I've biked New York City for many years, even prior to our now fantastic bike lanes. I cannot remember ever having any issue with accessory ride or any for hire vehicle picking up or dropping off a person with a disability. To Commissioner Do's earlier point, I may have had to briefly pause in a bike lane for a, for a higher vehicle at some point. However, I probably was more thankful for having a moment to catch my breath as opposed to feeling inconvenient, no matter how briefly. My greatest fear in these bike lanes are the motorcycles, e-bikes, and vigilante bikers. Moreover, I've been a disability rights advocate for many years working at the Bronx Independent Living Services, which is an independent living center. I often ride my bike to work. From my dual perspective, my overall suggestion would be that for any vehicle dealing with a person with a disability, exception should be made for that for higher vehicle. As a matter of fact, in May of twenty nineteen, DOT announced a rule that allows wheelchair-accessible AAR vehicles with four or more passengers to operate in bus lanes. This type of exemption should pave the way for further innovation, which would which would be tantamount to an equal opportunity for an already disadvantaged group. That twenty nineteen rule is a shining example of the public shaping public policy and a city agency being intelligent enough to recognize innovation. In conclusion, multiple city agencies have to be in step with assisting persons with disabilities, including DOT, TLC, NYPD, MTA, et cetera. Any solution regarding this matter should keep in mind feasibility and safety combined with a passion that is held bent on assisting people with disabilities achieve the same rights as all other New Yorkers and placing more fines on vehicles when and would invariably hurt people with disabilities and decrease their options. I urge TLC to suspend consideration of this rule until it has extensive discussions with the disability community, taxi for hire drivers, and other government agencies like the ones I mentioned above. Thank you. Uh also, I just want to ask, since I might have a couple more seconds left, that this is this is not, this is not an easy task. We're we're running out of room in the city and I I don't think any of us should be villainized, any any group in particular. It's just, we only have so much space on the streets. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Amir El-Nagar. You can unmute your microphone now. Amir? Alright, we'll come back to you.
Yes, yes.
Ah, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh this, okay, uh you the owner of the commissioner. I appreciate, I see you are very concerned about the problem and I respect myself as a TLC driver uh for like fifteen years in the city. Um I concern me and all driver, they are TLC partners. So we consider the TLC to be with us, you know? To be with us like what they provide with the education, with the with the with the vision zero, uh how we can uh participate with the vision zero. And the problem, it's the vision zero, they forgot about us. The DOT, they have to, uh we have to look back to the vision zero rule and they have to involve the TLC, involve the TLC driver in the bike, if it's if it's uh bus lane, bike lane. Where is the TLC? Where is the ride share? Where is the, you know, where's where's our uh uh point here, you know? So this is the point. And if you TLC, you know, uh they must help us educate more if they can if there is any repeat from driver about any violation like this. We already, we already get the violation by the NYPD, you know? Parking ticket and all kind of ticket. So the TLC is not uh it's not involved in this to give us a ticket. This must be, you know, uh help us to base this, you know, if 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 there's a serious problem. So we can uh we can consider some kind of online class if there is repeating in the same violation, you know? So we are uh we are a partner. We are not enemy to the TLC. I am a TLC driver. I'm proud for that. So please, please stand with us. Help us to, if there is any problem, to be behaved, to be be good. And we all love our city. We all uh respect the TLC and we follow the TLC rule. And we follow the TLC rule, uh allow the ride share app to uh to the driver to backup from certain location by the GBS. We not follow our uh our spots or our, whenever you wanna stop to backup. We follow the TLC rule, follow the ride share app, you know? So and the 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 tickets or violation, we already get it by the parking ticket from NYPD, you know? So we need to fix the problem. Uh we need to get more uh online uh classes. If we consider any TLC punishment, get online classes, why not, you know? But please stand with us and respect us as as a partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Hemalakis. John, go ahead. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Okay. Alright, we'll come back to you. Next up is Mamadou Alou Diallo. Mister Diallo, please unmute your microphone and begin.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, um good afternoon, commissioner and everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit. Um I'm a TLC driver for nine years now. Um first, I just wanted to um highlight the points that everyone has made, especially the wheelchair advocates. They made very good points. It's very difficult for um drivers to pick up or drop off all type of passengers, but especially the the wheelchair um passengers. So I would like to ask you, please to reconsider the rules. Um I'm in support of the vision zero because it's very safe. It helps the city become a lot safer since it's been inducted. But um please also consider the drivers and everything we have to go through. Um for the last nine years of since I've been driving for TLC, it's just been getting harder and harder. Every year is more fines, more classes we have to take, which takes away from the opportunity of for us to work. Like everyone said here, it takes us a whole day just to make probably a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars. And you have to kill yourself maybe to make the two hundred dollars. So uh if these fines continue, you you might not have any more drivers because you gotta remember, we we gotta pay every year to renew our license, every two years, renew the vehicle license, insurances. Every three months, we have to do inspection fees. The vehicle is not cheap to maintain. Its tires finished, brakes are finished, transmission, and so many expenses, I cannot list enough. Uh so I just wanted to remind everyone of what we have to go through. Please consider trying to make our lives easier because we are really definitely the ones who makes the city go around. Even maybe the commissioner, commissioner, a few drivers has probably picked you up and dropped you off at work a few times. So you know how important our jobs are. Airport runs, you know, hospital runs, schools, every morning. Everyone needs to go to school or pick up or drop off their kids. We are always there for everyone. So please um think about us. And I would like to also answer the few questions that the commission has asked about the repeated offenders who has accumulated a lot of points.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I think my suggestion for those people is that you should put, pick them in a separate, um I guess, corner and call them in into the TLC office and try to speak to them or penalize them even harder because they've been repeated offenders. And just try to not put us in the same category as those people, the people that have been driving safely for all these years. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for putting too much in it, but thank you. I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you, commissioner and everyone.
Yes, thank you. Our next speaker, Peruk Jurev. Peruk, can you please unmute your mic and begin? Okay, we'll come back to you then. Next up is Saif. I'm sorry, Saif Aza.
Alright, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
There's a lot of feedback.
Try to mute. Now you're mute, but try to mute the other sounds in the room.
Dijon is not next. Um we're looking for Saif.
Yes, yes, um I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Alright, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh my name is Saif Aza. I'm a TLC driver. And I'm also a member of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. And I am here to testify today um so you can reconsider these rules. These rules will only make it hard for us drivers to work while there is already so many rules and regulations that is more than enough for drivers to work, which are very a burden. We already have difficulty to where and how will we will pick up or drop off passengers. To go further, to pick up or drop over passenger to a different lo- location may not be suitable. Will it be safe or convenient to pick up or drop off for both the driver and the passengers, like those, the elderly or a mother with a baby with a stroller or a passenger who was on a wheelchair, especially passengers with limited mo- mobility. Some pickup and drop off locations have no choice but to pick up there in in these places. Now it is even more inconvenient for the drivers with these rules when will become in effect. The driver will get a fine for non-for non-dangerous driving to pick up in a spot that only takes minutes. Some places are already hard for us drivers to pick up or drop off as is, like bus lanes when a passenger would not comply to cross the street or they have many things they are carrying or a passenger with a disability. We must get as close as possible to them. Other places like shopping centers where there is a double parked car or deliveries or in some cases, late night pickups or drop offs or inclement weather. Now it's these points that will be added to a TLC driver license that would even make it worse for drivers that will cause more problems with some passengers that do not understand. And we are the one out there who are facing these passengers who are stubborn. If the city or the DOT provide a pickup or drop off designated spot, it will mean a lot to us. But who will guarantee that th- these spots are um designated on pickup or drop offs will not be occupied or blocked? These rules are nothing but insult to us as drivers who are hardworking and we are risking ourselves out there. So is this new course? It is on the expense on the of the driver.
Thirty seconds remaining.
As humans, we are the one who risk our lives to transport people safely to wherever they wanna get. And we are the ones who have to suffer while we struggling out there to be as safe as possible. To do collective punishments on some few drivers that are breaking the rules is not fair. I would ask you to reconsider this rules and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kubr Sancho Prasad.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh good uh good afternoon, commissioner and everybody. I've been a taxi driver for the last ten years. And I've been, I pick up a lot of disabled passengers, blind passengers. And sometimes you have to go and meet the customer because they are not well enough to come in the car. And by putting these rules that if we're blocking the crosswalk or and giving a double jeopardy for something that we know we shouldn't do, but we have to do it because the customer, we have to get them in the car safely. We don't want to risk their safety. Sometimes we need to help them inside the building. Sometimes to hand them off to somebody else if they are blind or if they are elderly. Um so as you can see with disabled passengers, this rule doesn't really make sense. It's actually penalizing and making the disabled communities uh lose more service because we will, we will have to be refused to pick them up because they can't walk to the edge of where a curb is to pick up passengers. You know? Um also, uh these rules will be a double jeopardy for existing driver, for drivers who already do, we do this, follow the all these rules. And it will encourage TLC to ticket drivers more for rules that they don't really, they enforce by our traffic agents and everything else. We do, we do not need TLC to come down on us and give us more points on our license, risking us losing or getting suspended because our license gets suspended earlier than a regular New York state license. New York state licenses, it gets suspended at nine points while TLC licenses get suspended at six points, putting the drivers' livelihood and everything in jeopardy. And then with the revocation at uh ten points or nine points. Now, these, we we know, we've been driving for so many years. We've, we drive two hundred miles a day. Sometimes we need to pull over, we need to use the bathroom, we need to pull by the pump because we we can't drive anymore and we don't know where we can, we're in the car. We're not, we're not leaving the car. We're standing, we're waiting.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Sometimes we need a break, but there is no designated taxi stand. This is a failure by the DOT that they haven't designated spots for wheelchair vehicles to pick up customers. They haven't designated more taxi stands for availability to help um drivers relieve or get breaks. So thank you, commissioner. I hope you do not pass these rules. These are gonna affect more passengers, especially with disabilities and more drivers are gonna.
Time has expired.
Alright, thank you. Our next speaker, Ahmad Bilal. Ahmad, yes, go ahead.
Well, greetings, everyone. My name is Ahmad and I'm a TLC driver. For the past nine years, I've been driving for companies, rideshare companies. And I remember since twenty fifteen, we are seeing that most of these avenue and streets are turning to be bus lane and a bike lane, which is make us very difficult to pick up and a drop off. Uh especially those passenger that they're they're um they're they're age issue or uh uh people with a disability have a mobile uh equipment or luggage or with the kids that they need to be picked up on the curb. And unfortunately, most of the curb, we see the bus lane or the bike lane. And to be safety, pick up the passenger, we have to be, you know, uh cross these lanes and to save, uh to pick up them on the curb for their safety. I think these rules and regulations by the charm and forcing a TLC driver to not uh pick up uh passengers and that's gonna discourage um 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 uh the drivers uh to pick up these passengers. And also these companies like Rideshare Company, they're forcing us to pick up um uh passenger on these, unfortunately, on these pickup location. And if we, if we cannot obey, they can uh uh permanently deactivate us. And that's the thing we we working for this company and to make money and to support our family. Um I believe that the, you know, we should be um treat it equally because as you see that the TLC drivers, I mean, almost completed like a million uh rides uh a day. That's actually forty five percent of the passenger compared to the MTA bus driver, the day-care passenger, almost two million uh per day. And we could see that everywhere the the bus lanes are being uh um built up for these uh buses and also the bike lanes. And nothing's happened to uh TLC drivers. And also, we have a very um difficulty when we need the relief because in the car, we don't know where we are. And unfortunately, there is not a lot of spot that we can park our car and do like personal relief. I personally have a bladder problem because, you know, uh I'm in the car and I'm looking where to park and relieve myself. And, you know, TLC have to reconsider and see what's the issue and solve the problem. But that's not gonna be the solve to penalize.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Uh put more penalty on the drivers, which actually there is a problem. Uh the problem is that the TLC have to work with the drivers, uh how to uh uh to solve the problem. And also, the TLC have to put pressure on these giant companies that they are pushing driver to pick up on those spot. If it's not, they'll deactivate us and we're gonna lose our jobs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danara Zanpesova. Okay, Danara, go ahead.
So good morning, well, it's good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Danara. And I've been a TLC licensed driver for years. And today I represent Russian-speaking community, uh drivers from past Soviet Union countries. And we are against of this rule. Let's be clear, the New York City streets are not designated for this reality. Most avenues have one side is a parking and the other side is a bike lane or bus line or the rental city bikes. Where do you expect us exactly to stop? If we pull into traffic, then we block a line. If we drive around the block, we create a traffic and we lose the ride. And we stop, if we stop where the application tells us, then we get fined. You actually set us up and let's talk about waiting. Uber gives passenger seven minutes to come outside. If we don't wait, the rider reports us for cancelling or for delaying and we get deactivated. If we do wait, TLC gives us fine. What kind, what kind of choices that? We are literally being punished for whatever we do. And what about passengers? We already spoke about the people with the luggage, elderly, disabled, kids. They need to be picked, picked up exactly where the rider is requested. We are providing service here, not playing a hide and seek. TLC is pretending is about its safety. Is if that really were true, then you'd be working with a Uber and Lyft to create a designated pickup zones. Like other cities have. Instead, you're putting all the blame on TLC drivers on us while we ignoring the fact that we have a zero control over where we pick up. And yet, you keep repeating that violations, or you're saying that this repeating violation is increasing. Of course, because you keep licensing more and more drivers every year. That's an increase of ten thousands of drivers every year. The rules haven't adapted. Instead, you punish us for the exact conditions that you are the ones created. More drivers means naturally more pickups and yet, yet, yes, more so-called violations. But raises and fixes the problem, you just keep writing more tickets.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Uh-huh. So do you, my question for you guys, do you really, really want a safe street or do you wanna just find drivers into the ground? Because right now, it feels like you're trying to push us out of the city entirely. We demand fair solution, not more punishment. Fix the system instead of making us drivers to suffer. The city creates a whole bus line, the city creates a space for the city bikes rental for the bike lines, but not for us.
Has expired.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Fazil Sabour Ali.
Hello?
Hello. Are you ready to begin?
Uh, yes. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, this is Fazil Sabour Ali. I have been driving with Uber for seven years now and just like the previous lady, Miss Dizon spoke. I have the same questions. Uh, I am all for, for these rules if you can enforce. But the question is, everyone is pointing out for the disabled people and for the elderly people and for the pe- for the mothers with toddlers and people who have a lot of groceries. So the question becomes that when we are supposed to pick them up, where should we be picking them up? There is even a leeway for the truckers that they get a twenty minutes pass for double parking. A, a, a single street, if it is double parked already by a truck, where are we supposed to go and pick them up? And as the previous lady, Miss Dizon mentioned, that Uber already gives them seven minutes. And in those seven minutes, if we are more than like two fif- two hundred fifty feet away, Uber stops the time and tells us to circle around. Now, if we go circling around and the next street is blocked for some reason, there is another car waiting in the middle of the road. Where are we supposed to go and how are we supposed to come back? And the time that we wasted from going from point A to pick up this person? And now because we have moved, because there is a bike lane or there is a bus lane and we were stopped in the middle of the road? Because of this, we were forced to move. And now we are removed from the Uber because Uber kicks or the can, or the passenger cancels the ride. And we have wasted another fifteen minutes and now Uber thinks that because this was driver's fault, they did not add us back to the queue and does not give us the right immediately after. So, so it seems like for Uber drivers and for like for TLC drivers, for taxi drivers, there is not a single option where to stop and where to pick up the guys. And if you designate spots in the bike lanes and in the bus zones, how can you make sure that, let's say there are three spots, but it's a Friday night? How can you make sure that when there are ten peoples requesting, what should the rest of the seven cars do and where should they be stopping? So if you can answer those and make sure that the rules are enforced, then go ahead, pass all the rules you want. But if you, if that cannot be ensured, then.
Time has expired.
Give us some more leeway, thank you.
Thank you. Our next feature, speaker is Chris Garcia. Mister Garcia?
Oh, you hear me? Okay, thank you. I am ready. Uh, good afternoon, my name is Christopher Garcia. I've been a professional driver in New York City for six to seven years. Um, I'm here the same reason as my, my other fellow drivers are here. I feel like the new rules are, they're very criminal and parasitic. They don't make the streets safer, they just set up, set us up to fail. And they're just, I just feel like they're like traps that are ensnared to sort of extract more money from us through unfair tickets. As drivers, we don't decide where pickups and drop offs happen. The app and the passenger do. Um, I just feel like the MTA is just trying to monopolize the entire road now. It's just um, every little spot, there's some spots I can't even pick up. I, we should have more leeway because we are essential drivers. I pay like eight thousand or twelve thousand dollars to the MTA. They can't let me park or sorry, set up to pick someone up quickly. But um, I just feel like it's very uh, just pred- predatory. And I just don't have to worry about some bus camera, I have to worry about some passengers, they're a bit entitled, they could get aggressive. And they don't get things down to a T. The rules are just unfair and they're, they're a bit dangerous as well. Um, some, sometimes these passengers carry luggage, groceries, they're pushing strollers for them to go running in the street. It ju- it just causes a lot of um, a lot of headaches. Um, instead of helping, um, I, I would like the TLC to, to instead help drivers and passengers by um, setting up a better way. Like there are cities in New Orleans where the apps don't let you pick up any legal spots. Um, New York City should adopt something sys- um, should adopt a same system of that caliber if that's possible. Um, and that's it, thank you. Think, uh, thank you for um, everyone that came by to testify. You guys are a real big help, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, circling back to Ramon Rivera. Mister Rivera, can you unmute your mic and begin? Nope. Alright, Faruk Jarav.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good afternoon. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. So my name is Faruk Jarav. I've been doing TLC for like six years now. I work for uh ride sharing apps like Uber and Lyft. So I joined with my, with the previous speakers on this matter. I think these new rules needs to be abolished because we work hard. We try to pick up customers at bus lane, bike lane. And sometimes they have strollers with baby, uh, shopping bags or senior people. And you know, it, it takes time to pick them up and drop them off. And you know, if we cancel, then it's gonna affect our ratings. And we're gonna get email from Uber Lyft that we do a bad job, so we're at the risk of deactivation. And in God forbid, we get the ticket that costs, I think, one hundred dollars and they're trying to make it two hundred dollars. So here's the thing, if we make one trip, we make right now minimum four dollars Uber and Lyft. If I get ticket for one hundred dollars, I have to make uh, twenty-five trips to cover this ticket. If it's two hundred, I'm gonna have to make fifty trips. That is just insane. So should I enrich a city or I have to take care of my kids or my family? So I truly believe these things needs to be reconsidered and make it more friendly for drivers because we're trying to make a living here. Or like, uh, I have heard some opinions before me. There should be designated places where we ha- we have to pick up and drop off customers. So we could feel, you know, at peace because we're not being watched, we're not being photographed by cameras. It's gonna be good for us, good for people, the riders, so they don't have to walk, you know, to the corner or one block or cross the street. Because you know, crossing the street may be dangerous. Um, so yeah, that's how I feel. I think, I believe a lot of drivers agree with me on this matter. Because in the city, there are thousands of drivers who do Uber, Lyft or maybe different type of uh, uh, like maybe X right. So I hope uh they will reconsider and you know, make the best solution for all of us, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the hearing on our first rule proposal and we're now moving to the second.
I'm sorry, moderator speaking. We are gonna try to uh get the people who are listed as iPhones. So I just allowed the person with the name iPhone to speak, so if they would go ahead with their testimony.
Do we have a name?
We do not.
When you are unmuted and speak iPhone, please uh let us know your name and affiliation. iPhone, you may now speak. Hearing none, we will go to our next speaker. Moderator, can you unmute iPhone three seventy-two? iPhone three seventy-two, you're unmuted. Can you please identify yourself and your affiliation? iPhone three seventy-two, you may unmute and speak. Hearing none. iPhone six. You may unmute, identify yourself and speak. You're unmuted iPhone six, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello, hello? Yeah, you can.
Go ahead.
Hello, is it me? iPhone six?
Yes, it's you. Identify yourself and your affiliation.
Yeah, my name is Robert. Mensa? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, uh, yes, my name is Robert. Yes, uh, uh, I want to talk about what is going on, if I should go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, concerning the previous passenger, I, I mean, what you guys are saying now is uh, uh, how can we be driving if, for instance, as I'm talking to you, I'm looking for a place to park now, just to use the bathroom. I want to go and do the, I ca- I don't have, I'm going around, round, it's so difficult. When you, I, I don't park well, by the time I park, I get a ticket. How can this happen? Please, if there's any way to help Uber drivers to pull over somewhere and use the bathroom, it's so difficult.
Unmute and then they can uh, uh, decide. Let me know when you've done it.
That's already been done.
Alright, Zoom user, I see you. You're still muted. If you would like to speak, you would need to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
This is Anglican Church who's up next and they're speaking now, so they can go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, uh, actually, my name is Emmanuel. Um, I've been doing um, livery work for the past um, six years or seven. And I'm happy and grateful to the commissioner and your team for organizing this hearing. Um, I want to ask, does the city want to phase out um, livery work or for higher vehicles from operating in the city? If the answer is no, then why all this pressure? Why is becoming unbearable? I have to give a personal experience I had yesterday.
Concerning the previous passenger, I, 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 I don't park well, by the time I park, I get a ticket. How can this happen? Please, if there's any way to help Uber drivers to pull over somewhere and use the bathroom, it's so difficult for us. And that is why you see most of the drivers, because they cannot, they will use number one in their car and pour it on the street because there's nowhere to park. This is very, very critical, very, very, very important uh, 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 subject by you guys, Commissioner, if you could help to deal, to help the drivers. Because we drive, 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 we don't make that much money. Now, the minimum payment is four dollars. I go and park, they give me ticket, how much am I gonna make? I'm buying gas, I'm doing this, TLC licenses, I do this, all this thing is included. So how can you guys help us to move forward? Help us, please, where one of us, maybe we can use, if we want to use the bathroom, like I said, we will get a place to park. So we come, we're, we're not able to get a ticket. And once again, you saying, uh, we parking by a, a bus, a bus or uh, a lane or a, when we are picking somebody, why should we pick them? You should give us some minutes or maybe ten minutes or five minutes not to park there, so that we could pick the particular passenger. Otherwise, how can we, what can we, I mean, you guys are trying to stop us from working or what? I really don't understand. So please, help us to move forward in terms of uh, 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 getting us a place.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Yes, so uh, that is what I have to say. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I hope you listen to what we are saying and make a, a provision for us. Please, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Alright, Cheryl, do you wanna call Zoom user and?
Sure, Zoom user, if you can unmute your microphone and identify yourself, please, and your affiliation. Moderator, is there a way to unmute the person?
I can ask them, but I can't unmute them.
All right, um, then commissioner, if it's okay with you, I'd like to go to the second rule proposal.
We have one more?
Yeah, moderator, go ahead and try to request an unmute, and then they can, uh, uh, decide. Let me know when you've done it.
That's already been done.
All right, Zoom user, I see you, you're still muted. If you would like to speak, you would need to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
This is Anglican Church who's up next, and they're speaking now, so they can go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, uh, actually, my name is Emmanuel. Um, I've been doing, um, livery work for the past, um, six years or seven. And I'm happy and grateful to the commissioner and your team for organizing this hearing. Um, I want to ask, does the city want to phase out, um, livery work or for hire vehicles from operating in the city? If the answer is no, then why all this pressure? Why is becoming unbearable? I have to give a personal experience I had yesterday. I was to pick up a wheelchair, uh, passenger. I accepted that ride, and I know where the passenger is, but there is no space. So I was in between the temptation to cancel the ride and abandon the passenger and move on, or my conscience wouldn't let me. So I had to go there, and I have to double pack. It's inconveniencing and wait until the passenger comes in. It takes more time to load the passenger, secure the passenger, and move on. And the payment is not even something to write them about. But we do this out of passion, it's a humanitarian work. So if the TLC is adding undue pressure, excessive ticketing and restrictions, how on earth are we to do this? I thought that drivers and the TLC are supposed to be partners in progress, helping the city and those who are in need. Um, with all due respect, it appears as if TLC is more interested in the money, the income out of all the tickets and all the summons, rather than helping the passengers and helping the drivers. Please, I'm appealing that, um, you have to relax some of these things, so that you help both the passengers and also those of us who are putting ourselves on the line to give a helping hand. At the end of the day, after ten hours, I'm going home with two hundred dollars. And then I'll get a ticket of two fifty. Uh, what, what is the use? It's discouraging. Please, I appeal to you, commissioner, reconsider this, make things more feasible and help drivers to help the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. All right, I'm gonna go back to the Zoom user one more time, I saw you unmuted. Uh, and so I wanna give you another chance. Put Zoom user back into the speaker list, please.
Yes.
All right, go ahead, please identify yourself and your affiliation, and you can go.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Kawa Sarigan, I'm a driver for more than ten years, I'm full-time for the access ride. Just very easy, simple, I have a lot of ticket, especially like last two weeks, the ticket has come from the bus, that is showing that picture that I'm helping my customer, that I don't wanna they lost the balance. Came to my car, and the bus camera is taking picture, it was in the water street, fifty water street. And I'm working for the city, they don't care about the ticket. And I still have to pay seventy-five dollar for that ticket. And immediately, I still have a ticket for that one. And the second one, this is maybe my advice, why you don't put it at the customer, the same drop-off in the bus stop? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your comments. All right, Cheryl, you can go on to the next.
All right, so we're closing the first hearing, the second hearing is on our rule proposal, implementing the state's COVID nineteen livery recovery act. Our first speaker is Beata V. Desai from Nitro.
Good afternoon, um, my name is Beata V. Desai, I'm the executive director of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. Um, you didn't do a presentation bef- before the rule, but I think it's fair to say that you are enacting this because there's state legislation, which I believe is requiring you to do so. Um, so I understand that there's, you know, kinda limited opportunity here for us to intervene. And I, you know, I'm curious to hear definitely from the folks in the livery industry. I just wanna give it some context overall. As of December twenty twenty-four, there were a hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred seventeen drivers that were working across this industry. There were eighty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five, um, of, of those drivers worked for Uber and Lyft alone. Hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-five vehicles. We know that last January, Uber's utilization rate was fifty percent. Everybody across this industry knows, drivers have been struggling. Lockouts happened because of the greed of the companies, they didn't wanna pay drivers according to the rules. But the material change was the oversaturation. It is really difficult, I mean, listen to the testimonies you just heard, the level of desperation of people saying the impact that a two hundred fifty-dollar ticket would have on them, having to take a course, you know, to take off a day, even a couple of hours to take a class would have on them. Drivers continue to be on the edge of economic recovery. While the corporations, particularly Uber and Lyft, may have, you know, bounced back post-COVID, we know that drivers themselves have not, the yellow cab industry as a whole has not. But including, you know, for F H V drivers outside of Manhattan, there is still limited work, you have cross-class dispatching. So it's hard to imagine that these vehicles are only gonna be working for neighborhood liveries. You know, they're gonna be working for Uber and Lyft, which also have livery bases that they operate. And so we're really concerned that the state, the city, now all these different agencies at the city level have these competing interests. You know, have these competing policy goals and interests. And the people that are being squeezed in the middle, again, are the drivers. The TLC needs to take a deeper dive, looking at the economic conditions of all the drivers across this industry, not only the high-volume F H V, but also livery, green cab, yellow cab drivers, and really see the impact that oversaturation has had on everybody, along with, you know, Uber and Lyft drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avik Kabeza from Carmel. Avik, can you unmute your microphone?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon commissioners, my name is Avik Kabeza, I'm the CEO of Carmel, board member of the Liberty Roundtable, and the chairman of the New York State Livery Workers Compensation Fund. Carmel supports the proposed rule with an important amendment request. But first, how did we get here? Prior to the arrival of Commissioner Doe, back in twenty twenty-two, we pleaded with the city to allow livery that lost their F H V license during COVID to renew their license once their market recovery started. We didn't ask for a penny. However, we were not able to get help from the city. On the other hand, in the past three years, since twenty twenty-two, the city helped the yellow taxis to the tune of half a billion dollars on financial help, which we applauded, but maybe we shouldn't. Because of Mr. Sai constantly fighting any recovery to delivery, I had enough of that. I would like to remind the commissioners that the livery sector started because the yellow didn't serve Upper Manhattan in the outer boroughs. It was the livery who did this, not what, no taxi was willing to do. So for the future, for you commissioners, I would like you to recognize us for what we have been done and doing for the last forty-five years. It took going to Albany so we can get the help that was needed. This is very sad. Having said that, it's better late than ever. And for that, I would like to thank Commissioner Doe for not fighting us in Albany. And second, for everything you've been doing since the ball started finally rolling. But if you really wanna do the right thing by the livery, we respectfully ask that you amend the proposed rules to prohibit transferring the affiliation to any non-livery base, not only to, to the high volume. Albany passed the livery, uh, livery recovery act because the livery sector suffered more than any other sector. Higher livery insurance by about two thousand dollars, when compared to black car, caused larger pa- percentage of livery vehicle owners to forfeit their vehicle license during COVID. The livery sector is the smallest sector today.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Or higher sector. Albany passed the livery law, the, passed the law for the livery, and we believe that the proposed rule should reflect it. Therefore, we urge you to please accept the amendment we requested, which is what the state law asked of you to do, and vote in favor of the proposed rules. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I can answer any question you have.
Hey, thank you. Our next and final speaker, Jose Altomirino from the Meran Group.
Good morning, Chair Doe and Commissioners, uh, Jose Altomirino, president of the livery base owners. Meran Group is our lobbyist. Uh, I'm here representing over two hundred fifty livery bases that serve tens of thousands of New Yorkers every day, uh, many in transportation deserts where no other options exist. We strongly support the proposed rule to implement the COVID nineteen, uh, livery vehicle recovery act. We were instrumental in advocating for its passage to provide long overdue relief for the hardest-hit sector in the for-hire industry. Uh, let's be clear, no other sector suffered more than liveries, um, during COVID nineteen, and those other sector has been more devastated by the twenty eighteen license cap, which significantly reduced our ability to operate while allowing app-based companies to dominate. True, it's not just a policy adjustment, it's a lifeline for an industry that's been in crisis for years. This is why it's critical that these renewed licenses remain exclusively within the livery sector and are not redirected into high-volume base or non-livery sectors. These vehicles were originally issued to serve livery bases and their riders, and many of whom rely on our areas with few transportation alternatives. Allowing these licenses to shift away from livery service would be undercut the purpose of the recovery effort, further weaken an industry that's already endured severe losses. The livery sector has lost over eighty percent of its vehicles since twenty fifteen, a staggering decline that has pushed countless small immigrant-owned immigrants to the brink of extinction. Without strong enforcement, this will be, will not be enough to reverse the damage. We need real safeguards to ensure licenses are used as intended to rebuild the livery industry and strengthen the transportation network for the communities it serves. Um, this will help drivers to be micro businesses themselves, to have their own insurance. Since the twenty eighteen cap, what's happened is that drivers have been forced to rent, fleet owners have become extremely powerful, charging whatever they want for insurance. And drivers are stuck there because they are not allowed to get their own vehicle. Even when they finish paying their vehicle, they have to stay using the corporation insurance. And this forces an un- an undue burden on our drivers. Uh, we hope that we continue to fight, we urge the commission to ensure that renewed licenses remain with the livery sector and not be transferred to non-livery bases, strictly enforce affiliation requirements to prevent any unintended shifts. And, uh, we hold TLC accountable to ensure these licenses truly support the recovery and their sustainability. Uh, livery businesses. Uh, we hope to continue working, we still are suffering from the twenty eighteen cap. And most, more than anyone, our drivers are suffering. As I've stated, they are forced to overpay insurance, they're forced to work through corporations and fleets, and this is unfair to all of us. Thank you very much, if any questions appear.
Thank you, Jose. Uh, I have a question for Avik and Jose. Um, this is regarding, uh, uh, transferring of these licenses. Uh, and it is clear in the legislation that, uh, these licenses cannot be transferred, uh, or affiliated with a high-volume base, and we have made that clear within our rules. Why not give the driver the flexibility to transfer or affiliate with smaller, uh, F H V bases? You know, like livery or, uh, F H V, um, or Lux Limo bases. And so I, I wanna understand, uh, that point of view, and so, uh, I wanna recognize Jose and Avik, uh, to speak on that.
I, I can take a first shot at it, and definitely, I would like to hear Jose. Uh, they can definitely change affiliation within the livery sector, so all the livery bases, we're, we're not asking for you to limit that. But we need, we need this time just to adjust our supply and demand now that we are, uh, we don't know how many we're gonna come back. Uh, the gap of insurance needs to, we need, we need the time to adjust the market to back to what it was. All right, so if you, if you allow them to escape to, uh, uh, to, to black car, we have done nothing. Now, remember, we do not block them from receiving trips from others. All we are saying is keep the affiliation with us, they can even do other, any class that they want trips from. We want a chance to recap, to recover. Now, because it took three years, commissioners, we have been monitoring, I'm giving you the case of Carmel, and I'm also a part of the Liberty Roundtable, and the, the percentage are the same. In COVID, we lost about forty percent of our fleet. When we started asking for that renewal, we were already seeing a decline in, in who, people that left, left the industry, left New York because they couldn't renew. We are now at twenty-five percent. We are now at twenty-five percent, I keep a very close track on, on Carmel-affiliated drivers. We had two hundred and two drivers ready to renew by the time, uh, by September twenty-two, which is the cutoff point which you gracefully were okay not fighting. We are today at maybe fifty-one, fifty-two target, target ma- uh, target number. So we, we, we need this time. If you wanna limit it with two years, three years, I'm fine with it, we don't limit them getting trips from others, we don't limit them. But the barrier for entry is bigger on the livery, and we don't want them to come in and just to flip back into it. That's, that's the main request. I was able to retain those two hundred for years prior to that. I believe I will be able to retain them once I'm given a chance to do so again, I just need this, this period.
Commissioners, as Avik spoke, uh, you know, it's clear to point out that the livery sector was almost thirty thousand vehicles, we're now down to under four thousand, maybe under three thousand at this point. Um, we fought hard in the state to ensure that we continue to exist, to push forward. Um, as per your own TLC report, your annual report of the cap, your report said that the livery sector needed vehicles in there. So what we're trying to do here is exactly do that, target our sector. We are not saying that other sectors don't need it, but we're fighting for our sector. And if we're fighting for our sector, just, it only makes sense that these vehicles are affiliated to our sector. They can go to any base in the livery world, they can, and even being livery, they can still work with other F H V sectors, um, outside of the high volume. But we, we have to be realistic, like, I don't understa- I don't understand why they should be overly complicated. If we're fighting for this sector, your own report states that there should be additional vehicles in our sector, that then these vehicles should remain in our sector. Um, that's why, that's what we're asking for, right? We're asking to make sure that our sector continues to, to exist, because at the point that we're going, in a few years, we will not exist. Uh, our drivers are stuck, paying overdue insurance or paying extreme rental cases, and they, they can't go anywhere else because there are no vehicle, right? We can't add vehicles, which is a big problem.
And if I may, if I may, Commissioner, one of the biggest.
Go ahead, that's it, Avik, we can talk offline. Uh, with the additional comments that you may have, you can submit them, uh, today. But I appreciate.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, and Avik for speaking, uh, on, uh, this regulation. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Cheryl for any comments, and then I'll take it back to end.
No, that's the conclusion of our hearing, so it's back to you.
Great, uh, thank you, Cheryl, for leading, uh, us through, uh, our lengthy public hearing today. Uh, I appreciate all of our drivers, all of our advocates, all of our Vision Zero and, uh, a sister agencies and, uh, roadway advocates for speaking today. Uh, there is, uh, a lot to consider, uh, as we go through, uh, the final rule-making process. Uh, I'll work with my fellow commissioners to ensure that the outcome is fair, uh, but also, uh, at the heart of it, uh, continue. uh, but also, uh, at the heart of it, uh, continues to make sure that our streets are safer uh, than ever, so that we can realize our dream of Vision Zero, which is, uh, ser- zero serious injuries or roadway fatalities, uh, i- in the near future. Uh, again, I wanna thank the commissioners for, uh, staying with us, listening, uh, to us. Uh, and with that, uh, at one oh eight, I'll adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.